Hear ye, hear ye, hear ye, this honorable county commissioners meeting of Rome County, Tennessee is now in session. The Honorable Chairman Shannon Hester presiding. God bless the United States, the great state of Tennessee in this honorable meeting. This time Chapel Adams will lead us in prayer, afterwards please remain standing for the pledge to our nation's flag.
Let's pray. Most gracious Lord heavenly Father, God want to privilege you to this because we know that you're here and Lord we thank you for the ability we have to come and conduct business that we need to conduct. Lord, we thank you so much for those who represent us, God they give us their time, they give us their talents to serve you and to serve us. And God I pray that you just bless them especially. And Lord I ask for your hand upon each one of us, Lord lead us and direct us in our lives so we can live for you in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated and please silence yourself, honors. Go ahead and sign in if you haven't already. We will be doing it manually tonight, so just be advised, be patient with us. I guess you'll have to do a roll call.
Berry.
Here.
Brackett.
Here.
Cunningham, here. Doug.
Here.
Ferguson.
Here.
Yan.
Present.
Ross.
Here.
Hamilton, here. Hendrickson.
Here.
Hester.
Here.
Doug.
Here.
Kirby.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Parks.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Henderson.
All right, and when you do make a motion, if you would say your name and when you have the second, if you would say your name, and I'll try to repeat it as well so Beth can record that. Need a motion for approval in the minutes of the May 12, 2025 meeting?
Wilson motion.
Second, Doug.
All right, Commissioner Wilson.
Nothing further.
Commissioner Doug.
Nothing.
Any discussion and debate? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. All right, acceptance of committee reports and correspondence.
Shalom.
Anderson, second. And Berry and Henderson, Commissioner Berry.
Yes, sir. Under number one, Representative, and I may have missed it at some point, with the Public Utility Board, do we have a memorandum of understanding or something?
We've been working on a memorandum of understanding for some time and we have more work to do. And that's.
That's to do a number of things in with that.
That's the goal.
So we're working, that's working progress.
Working progress.
Okay. Number two, we've got a contract, I think, we're working out. Commissioner Park, could you just give us a brief synopsis of what's going on so that Commissioner Doug on the firewood thing, I think you've done a great job of getting us to this point.
Yeah, we're just, it's a contract essentially between the county and the volunteers. Kind of lays out, you know, how much money the county gives them and what's expected from the volunteers essentially. It's a liability break in between us and the volunteers. I think county attorney alluded to a lawsuit that happened in Mill Tennessee or somewhere where it was not even a bomb and a fire, but it was having a function at the fire department and county ended up getting sued. So it's just kind of just defining their roles and our role and putting a separation in between us and the county or the volunteers. It's going well.
And I think we've worked most of it with just insurance.
Yeah.
You're good. Again, I believe you've done a great job of getting that, connecting that group together.
We're getting it.
And secondly, thank you. Yes, the other one was number six. There was an amendment, is the planning commission, I think, working ongoing from one acre to five acres? Is that what I read?
There's just discussion at this point.
So whatever they do, do they ever bring back, just like y'all, do they ever bring whatever that is back to the long range planning committee or to this committee or whatever we're going to do?
Yes.
But they did have discussions. We're good? Number seven, I couldn't open the patent, that 400 page document that we have, but that was on the new zone that's coming in, I think.
IRC.
Excuse me, new IRC.
Yeah.
Is that, can we get, can we make sure to get a copy of that? It may just been me, I couldn't open it. Because I think if you go back to the last one, I think it was in 2018.
Yes.
When we adopted that, we adopted a lot of problems with it, right? That was that one, was that the one where we adopted the, we had the five acres down Eagle Point, Eagle Point Drive?
I don't know. You're talking about the international residential code that's what we're talking about there in that county. That's the subdivision regulations and that's been taken out.
So we'll make sure we don't have any more.
It's gone.
Good. Thank you on that one. And the 20 significant changes, you'll make us aware of those as well.
Yep, from building.
Can you go ahead and get those through so that we can be working on that and looking at that before we?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it's all that.
All right, Mr. Henderson, you had the second.
Nothing further.
All right, any other discussion, any other debate? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. All right. Beth, do we have any notebooks?
I did.
Can you read them forward?
Yes, it's Darian Barnett, Megan Brummett, Randy Catherine, Savannah Chestnut, Cecilia Henderson, Samantha Howard, Deborah Maisra, Scott McLuhan, Katherine McCallany, Marie McGee, Cassandra Miles, Joyce Roberts, Jessica Robinson, and Darcy Sword.
Motion Henderson.
Second, yeah.
All right, Commissioner Henderson.
Appreciate your willingness, sir.
Commissioner Dan.
Nothing, sir.
All right, any discussion and debate? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Now comes time for a hearing of delegation. This time if you want to address the county commission, the timer will not be up there, I'll keep the timer up here, so please limit your time to three minutes.
I'm going to go, is anybody else going to go? I apologize, go ahead, Charlie, you have your time. Scott Mason, Harriman City Manager, 139 Casey Road, Harriman, Tennessee. Got Councilman John Brackett with me as well, who's one of the Harriman City Councilmen, also sits on our Parks and Recreation Committee. Passed out before your meeting, just a picture, one of the newest buildings we have in the city of Harriman. If you've not been by our community center where our splash pad is located, this is an outdoor learning center that we were able to construct thanks to a partnership through Michael Dunn Foundation. It looks like a pavilion, but it's a whole lot more than that, has 88 compatible bathrooms, a kitchen, and it's just going to be something we're going to be offering members of the community to use when they're down at the splash pad. And I wanted to come before you and just tell you how much we appreciate Officer Sparks and Officer Tredway and the inmate crew, they stepped in and did a majority of this work, which saved us and these grant dollars a lot of money that we can turn around and use to even bring us even more an out catching place. So we've used Officer Sparks and the inmate crew before, they've done a fantastic job, we've already put in a proposal, we want to build more of these at all of our parks and we want to lean on Officer Sparks, Officer Tredway, and the inmate crew, they did a fantastic job. So just wanted to sing their praises and tell you how greatly they were used by the city of Harriman.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next.
Good evening, good to see everybody, I'm Justin Snow, I'm the president and CEO of the Rome Alliance. Just a couple of updates tonight, we had our second annual Rome Chamber, the Rome G Festival this past Saturday, and the weather was a little bit iffy, but we pulled it off. Successful event, we had close to 150 geeks, over 400 attendees. Typically, I like to give y'all annual, an annual Rome Alliance annual report, but Jennifer Brown, who's our Director of Education and Workforce Development, said, I would like to put together an annual report for our education matters program. I said, that would be great. So she put that together last week, so you guys are the first ones to see this. She calls the report milestones and momentum. I just want to mention a few of the programs that you'll see in the report. The first one I'll mention is the 70% by 2025 pep rallies. At the heart of our efforts, the 70% by 2025 campaign continues to energize and motivate students to pursue education behind, beyond high school. The Connect Rome was a first ever inaugural event as part of our strategic focus on workforce and economic development. The Rome Alliance launched Connect Rome in 2024. It's an initiative designed to strengthen collaboration between education and industry throughout Rome County. Furthermore, we do students in the workplace, and you'll see in the report, this year Rockwood Middle School students participating in industry tours at the Rome Regional Business and Technology Park as part of our partnership with Rome County's Get Yourself to the School Initiative. The Rome County Schools Combined Middle and High School Career Fair occurred on April the 1st, and we partnered with Rome County Schools Career and Technical Education Department to host a successful countywide career fair for all Rome County middle and high school students. We had our first ever Pathways to Purpose Signing Days. This year we proudly celebrated Pathways to Purpose Signing Days across Rome County, honoring high school seniors as they committed to their next steps after graduation. I'll mention a couple more, class of 2025 Tennessee Scholars on May 6th, Education Matters hosted the Tennessee Scholars Breakfast, recognizing 107 high school seniors who successfully met the rigorous requirements to become a Tennessee Scholar. And last but not least, our leadership Rome County Class, Youth Leadership Class of 2025 kicked off their leadership journey with a Wink Ron Cat, and that was just a couple weeks ago, and I'm pleased to see, I think we've got four or five of our youth leadership in attendance tonight, you guys raise your hands. Thank you for my report, but Education Matters is important to the Alliance, is important to the county, spend time to look through this report because it does show the full body of work of all the education programs that we either administer or help support the county.
Mr. Chairman, could we ask those four to introduce themselves and let us know what school they go to? You can. It says why I can't.
I'm RJ Creswell, and I go to Millway High School.
I'm Haley Moses, and I also go to Millway High School.
I'm Alexis Carter, and I also go to Millway High School.
Time out, time out.
I'm Polly Gayway, and I also go to Millway.
Thank you. All right, anyone else want to address the county commission?
Four to three minutes, Charles, I'd like to give this to, play it here for the record, for the minutes, play it. This is a lawsuit that I filed on June 6th of last week right there, it's 38 pages and five exhibits, I'd like that into the minutes. Houston, B. Jack Stockton, Greg Lefty, Clay Creswell, and Mr. Hester, it's a conspiracy to interfere with civil rights law too, on that here into the minutes.
All right, your time's up.
No, no, hang loose, I've got more in there on the record, you just chill. Now, now you're a little hard to get off me.
No, no, look here.
Let me get this on the minutes before we start.
Just hand them through, you can explain them later.
Right here's, okay, okay, in the three minutes, this is a motion to recuse Holly M. Kirby, the Chief Justice for Springfield Court of Tennessee that I filed today. It has exhibits that establish that this county attorney, Jeff Wiggs, Tom McFaul, another go fisher, on April 16th, forced to chief justice decision. That's what I'm saying, it was filed on the record today, motion recused, motion recused. Now, this lawsuit that I filed right here, what happened, I showed it in here on May 12th of last month, right here, and Mr. Hester while having a conflict of interest, and he has received thousands of dollars worth of stolen property, Mr. Hester has, the property has been transferred by way of kidnapping, forgery of the chief justice signature, and false imprisonment against me and my brother. Now, these are federal crimes, and this lawsuit right here has just been filed in last month, now when it's in here, they had a whole shirt department here to intimidate, and it works, it's scary, they was armed, okay? Now, this county attorney's got recusers, say, Mr. Hester, you do too, they dress you as honorable, a honorable individual, they say called recusal by suspense, hey, that's when you know you're in conflict, you get away from the text. Do you understand that?
Mr. Chairman.
Now, hang loose, man, now hang loose, I want you to sit down and sit down.
I don't understand the law, but I know that we carry a law, anything the truth says, because if you charge lawsuits against us.
I'm asking for these 14, now I'm asking these 14 commissioners that's not involved in this lawsuit, that I just handed in, to look at it and take a vote, to recuse these, you can count him out, Mr. Wilson, he works, keeps place, you can count him out.
They're not working.
All it takes is one, all it takes is one to say, we need somebody to investigate this. It's crimes that's happening, federal crimes that's happening in view of the public, in broad daylight, broad daylight, and it does place the general public's lives in extremely grave danger. Now, it's on the record, now I'll slide on out here, I call force and they'll be out of date. I fear for my life, now you blocked me, mister, you blocked me from reporting, I don't know who you connected with, but you need to learn to keep your mouth shut when somebody's reporting a federal crime. Now, I slide.
Now you're threatening, now you're threatening.
No, I, that ain't no threat, I'm trying to keep your mouth shut, cause hey, read that team for what I gave you, I'll slide out of here, I ain't threatening nobody, ever. Let me slide out of here, will you? Yeah, guys wait. Pastor, you're in conflict, boy, this is extortion. Thank you, God bless you, sir, I'm glad. Hey, Mr. Hester, some days, and Crib Black Tim, if there's law here right here, and Mr. Creswell, it's being covered up, and it's extremely dangerous.
Rocky, we're done.
You, you need to contact that big guy.
Sorry for the circus. All right, anyone else want to address the county commission?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to address the county commission on a personal, I can stand and take my three minutes, but I would like to address the commission.
Feel free to say it.
I can say it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think you heard it, Mr. Hook, it's been an old country.
My name is Mike Hooks, I live on 3627 Kingston Highway, Kingston, Tennessee. I was born in 1957, I was saved when I was 10 years old, 60 or 57 years ago. I have served this body for, on and off, for over 20 or about 20 years. And we have come to set our meetings over God's will. We voted years ago that we would not set any meetings on Wednesday nights, Sundays or Sunday nights, that we would give that time to the Lord, which we're, we should if we're a child of God. And I'm not preaching, I'm just telling you the facts. It's God first, family, and I lost my beloved wife last month, but it's still God first, family, and then government, and it's in that order. We have set our workshop, one of the most important meetings that this, this body of people can hold. We have set a budget workshop on Wednesday nights at 6:00. So if you go to church and you'd love to see what your money has been spent on, you gotta, you gotta make to us. Now, I know this is not an ox in the ditch. We've got 24/7, 365 that we can set meetings in around our churches here in Rome County. 98% of the churches in Rome County, Hanerson County, and the counties surrounding us have service on Wednesday nights. So we're hindering those people from coming to this meeting or forcing them to make a choice, to link their pastor and their congregation and come to a meeting when it's uncostful, when we can make other times to have the meeting. It's not going to be that long of a meeting. We can back it up with another meeting, I'm just saying, I'm opposed to having meetings that interfere with our local churches. Mr. Chairman, that's.
Thank you, Mr. Hook.
Mr. Chairman, it's becoming evident that we're going to have a situation every month. I'd like to see us.
So it'll be, in the workshop, we will go over the new rules.
Okay.
We already have a draft resolution, the attorney has written it.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to address the county commission? I'd just like to say that I agree with Mr. Hook.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, is that something that we can vote tonight and move that meeting also Wednesday?
So we can't vote on it tonight, and it's a workshop, we can't take a vote in a workshop.
We could.
Technically, you could if you waived the 12 day rule, but I don't know about scheduling conflicts with other commission meetings, it's something that we'd have to look at tomorrow.
Have to get with Amber and find the open date, that's all it would be, I believe, am I not correct? Yeah, I mean, it would, it'd be hard to do tonight. Right, yeah, that's what I'm saying, they would have to, she's got the schedule with her.
All right, let's move on, anyone else want to address the county commission? All right, hearing none, seeing none, we'll move to the county attorney's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have a few things. First of all, we have received our settlement proceeds from HME on the pumper truck. Secondly, the tree lawsuit on Broken Arrow Point has been filed, I don't think it's been served yet, but it has been filed. On June 23, we have several of our code violation cases set for trial, and the last item, you have in your packet a Resolution 62502 that cancels all contracts with Novatek. I have submitted a proposed revised resolution, and I've given each of you a copy today before the meeting, but the nature of the revision is, I have only been furnished one contract with Novatek, so I have amended to cancel that contract because that's the only one that I've read, and that's the only one that I can verify that has the clause that I've highlighted in the revised resolution that says a contract will expire if you don't fund it for the upcoming year. So my recommendation is that you cancel the one contract that we know about, and then we can do some further investigation to see if there are additional contracts. That, Mr. Chairman, is my report, I'll be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Any questions, the county attorney, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Doug?
If there are other contracts that you find that after today, we wouldn't be able to cancel those, correct? Because it would be past, you'd be past you law one.
Well, I don't know what they say.
Okay.
I don't know if they have the clause that says that they expire if they're not funded for the upcoming year, but you are correct, if they're written the way this one is written, they can only, they only terminate early if they're not funded for the next fiscal year. So if there are additional contracts, if they do have this language, then you would have to wait a year.
Can we hear from Lynn Barnett?
Sure. They are all the same terms, I did just send him one as a sample, I didn't, I should have picked up on that with your email, that you needed all of them, but they're all the same terms.
So how many do you have?
Well, in any department in the general discovery side, I think your schools are going to get, go to camp as well, but that's a different contract totally, but all of ours are exactly the same.
Can we revise it to include all of those contracts?
Well, the one that you have on file would cancel everything.
Okay.
The original resolution will cancel all contracts from the Huel Packard.
Any further questions, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Commissioner Barrett.
Do all these contracts, they have an escape clause if we wanted to?
I can't verify that they do because I only said one.
And the other question is, we, I was reading where we have, if we have two or more inoperable automobiles, that's a junkyard?
I don't remember exactly what the resolution said, is it, is it two?
More than two.
I think it's more than two inoperable and unregistered, is that correct? So they have to not run and they can't, the tags have to have been expired.
So we've got a lot of junkyards in our campus. So that would supersede any of this other stuff as we're coming to that. So if there's four cars that are inoperable on blocks or whatever, that's a junkyard.
A definition.
Unless they're in the village. So does that, does that, does that fall under, again, somebody has to report it? Or if we see a junkyard?
Well, some are reported, they're looking at one, we said another one right there in the same neighborhood, we take care of it where they're.
It used, I think it used to be five, wasn't it?
It was five.
Three, wow.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to the county mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Each of you, if you hadn't already picked up your budget notebook, you have your budget documents in front of you. Obviously, this is in preparation for our budget workshop, which is at this point scheduled for the 18th. If, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to, interested in changing that, just let us know, we'll get to work on it first thing in the morning.
Yeah, let's look at it.
The point is, we want you all to have every opportunity to come talk to us, scheduled meeting would be in January, if you have questions. Our work was done in record time, but this being a reappraisal year, we were waiting on the certified tax rate, which we didn't get until last week, so that's what the delay was in getting you these materials. I was disappointed that we weren't able to give them to you a month in advance, but we did the best we could. Speaking of certified tax rate, we now have that information, we know that outside the city limits is going to be 149 and change, and inside city limits can be 145, is that correct? So we have that information, that is built into your budget documents now. I was excited last Friday before last, but it's the third point on your report here, University of Tennessee Knoxville and Consolidated Nuclear Security, which manages and operates Y-12 for NSA, signed an agreement on May 30th to collaborate on initiatives to enhance national security. As part of that collaboration, the partners will develop a national security prototype center in Oak Ridge to solve complex manufacturing problems. The new NSPC facility will join the emergency response training facility right there on Galahad Road where we did the Iroquois announcement. So this is the third building that's going to be built on that campus with UT being a partner there, that's a huge deal, I think, for Rome County. There is the potential they could even do a fourth building on that campus. So super exciting news and continued momentum in economic development on the reservation. Around that topic, we haven't received it in our office yet, so I don't know if it tipped your mailboxes yet, but in the county news, in NACO, there's a front page story about the NACO- there's a front page story about the, Naco's leadership visit to Roan and Anderson Counties in April. Uh, they did a three-page story on that, so be on the lookout for that. For, Rome County's made, uh, front page news on the county news that covers three hundred, three thousand sixty-nine counties.
Three thousand sixty-nine counties, boroughs.
And boroughs, parishes.
And parishes.
That's right. So I wanna thank, uh, Commissioner Berry for his leadership pulling that together, and, uh, he was instrumental in bringing them to Rome County. I'm sure it's not gonna be the last time. Um, and then finally, uh, I would just like to say, we have, uh, tonight, I'm proud to recognize a remarkable group of students who have represented Rome County with excellence through their participation in the four-H public speaking and achievement contests. These young leaders have demonstrated outstanding communication skills, creativity, and subject matter expertise at both county and regional levels. Please join me in congratulating the following four-H winners for their hard work and accomplishments. Their dedication is a reflection of the bright future ahead for Rome County. Before I call their names, I'd first like to ask Ms. Anna Johnson, our four-H agent. There's, there's Ms. Johnson. Uh, to please stand and be recognized for her leadership and support of these outstanding students. Also, want to extend a special thank you to Jessica Wilkinson Smith, the extension agent and, and county director, who was able to attend this evening, but has played a vital role in supporting our local four-H program. As I call each student's name, I ask that you also stand so we can recognize you individually. So public speaking contest county winners and regional participants, Hannah Shaw, fourth grade.
She's not here.
She's not here, okay.
About even here, so it might be easier if they want to, I'll put them on the spot to introduce themselves.
That would be fantastic, if we just stood and they introduce themselves. Just like our little team leadership.
Hi.
You know, bye-bye.
Anna, how you doing? I'm Anna All, I'm in, gonna be a junior this year. I'm at August Plains High School, and I'm a public speaker for issue of...
My name is Braxton Bailey. I'm going to seventh grade, and I'm gonna be a junior on this year.
What school? I'm here, I wasn't hearing. What was it?
Dylan Smithers, he's gonna be a freshman at Midway.
Okay, awesome.
I'm Quinn Cavalli, I'm going in sixth grade next year, and I'm from Mid, and I'm going to be in Midway Community School.
I'm in the district, and I'm going to fifth grade, and I'm in a way in a good school.
I'm Jenny McValry, and I'm going to the fifth grade, and I go to the Jefferson Elementary School.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. I'd ask you...
All right, Mr. Chairman, any, Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead.
I'd like to ask...
Wait, two.
Uh, last month, I asked if you'd send a letter to the Rome County Schools System and Board about making their, uh, live streaming of their meetings, and if they couldn't or haven't, if they would meet here. Has that been done?
The letter has not been sent. Discussions haven't had, and I wanted to talk to you more specifically about what you want to put in the letter. When did it get?
I just, uh, I just want them to, if they can't have live streaming there, I would like them to come here. They claim they want to be open, let's make it open. You know, you, you, nobody wants to hide, you know, in its secret and, and all that. So I, I'd just like a, a letter sent to them saying, you know, meet here until y'all can get your live streaming set up.
Pretty much, no. That's, that's something, yeah, so, that's all I, like you said.
Chair, recognize Commissioner Wilson.
Uh, yeah, one other question. So, I'm not sure how this fits in at this, the right time, but we're talking about industry, and, and we're talking about, uh, the Rome, where, uh, Rome Academy is. And I know that's a, that's been a hindrance for us down in that way. Have we had any other complaints that's been going on recently? Because I'm wanting to enact the ad hoc committee back into the, uh, for the, for the Rome Academy.
Well, so, uh, county attorney Lefty and I met about this very topic today. Uh, last week, there was a, we meet every Monday. There was a meeting at Rome Academy last week called by Chancellor McFarlane and the DA, Judge Stevens. Uh, I was out of town, so Kaylee represented our office. Chief Phillips was there. So several stakeholders from this, that met with leadership of youth opportunities. Uh, I was told it was a productive meeting. But we are looking at, we, we, our discussions are looking at what, um, what we can do from an executive position to apply pressure to help this company do what it needs to do as a corporate citizen, particularly in that area. One of the things, and I want to speak for you, feel free to speak up here. One of the things that, that Greg mentioned to me this afternoon was, we may want to resurrect that committee again, because it worked the first time, right? I think it did.
We got five years out of it.
Yeah. So I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm fine with that approach. It seemed to work the first time, Mr. Berry, I know you were involved in that. So if that's something you all wanna do, I mean, obviously, the chairman can, can call that ad hoc.
I, I would like to see us...
We probably have to appoint new members or something to, uh, have led, so...
Yeah, I would like to see us reappoint on that and, and have it, uh, already formed so that we could, uh, if needed to, move forward with that. We at least need to meet, because that is something that's affecting our area itself.
I'm, I'm investigating legal options to see what we can do to make sure. I, I'm, I'm mostly concerned about the tenants in that park and the neighbors around that surrounding area.
That's where you have most of your complaints.
Exactly.
Sure, yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
One of the biggest problems that we had back then was Department of Human Services sending kids that didn't qualify for the licenses that the DCS had. So you were getting kids that, that shouldn't be there. And that may be one of the things we need to look at, is if that's still the case, then we might need to get the DCS involved in it.
Chief, chief was there, he may be able to speak to, I know there was discussion around that topic.
So, so Rome Academy is designed to deal with dependent neglect children. And, um, having the juvenile justice children, it's not designed for that. So DCS replaced them in custody, and when they're placed in custody, they're dependent neglect kids, but they may have been juvenile justice at some point. Whenever they come into there, it's hard to get all that information from them because DCS has placed them, but nine times out of ten, or ten times out of ten, they're dependent neglect. So we, we did have a good discussion, you know, talking about, um, what we can do to work with them, then work with us, and, and try, because, you know, the kids, they, you know, they don't have nobody. It's like, you know, the parents don't want them, or, you know, they're bad kids that are having learning disabilities, you know, health issues, you know, a number of things. So it's nice to have places like that to help get these kids on track to be productive in, in society. So, uh, we'll work with them any way we can, but, you know, they've got, they've gotta work back with us. They're, they're stakeholders, youth opportunities, county, and they're out of Florida, they're out of Tampa, Florida. They came in, we had some really good talks, but, you know, uh, we just need to see action, so...
All right. Any other questions for the county layers?
Mr. Chairman, I do. Where are we at on the Riley Creek, getting started, doing some upgrades?
Riley Creek campground?
Campgrounds.
We are, wait, I'm gonna get the timelines right. Our deadline for submission for the natural resources damages and assessment restoration grant through DOE, mouthfuls, is middle of July. We have a ARC grant for seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, that's contingent of, uh, I'll take that back. We have a grant for seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for ARC. We apply for that grant to help us with a match for the NRDA grant, so there's a tie here. We have close to a million dollars sitting ready to deploy, but we're kinda waiting to see what other money we've got to know how to prioritize the projects.
I didn't, I was just asking, I've had phone calls, we're getting restless. We went up on the rates, they're ready for...
There will be, there will be at least a million dollars spent down there. Probably one point seven five million dollars, potentially three plus million dollars. So it's just a matter of figuring out how big that bucket of money's gonna be to know how to prioritize the projects. Because you're talking about, you know, septic, roads, water, electrical. How to prioritize that depends on how big your bucket holds.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, uh, unless there's any other questions for the county mayor? All right, special orders. I have two of them, confirmation of reappointment to the Rome County Ethics Committee of following individuals, Wayne Chriswell, Charlotte Cunningham, Lance Doug, Brack Goss, Chris Lehman. These terms will expire, uh, thirty June twenty twenty-six.
So...
Motion by, uh, Hooks.
Henderson, second.
And Henderson, the second. Commissioner Hooks.
In table, um, one.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, no, that's Carter.
All right, any discussion, any debate? All right, all of those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. All right, next, uh, special order is confirmation of reappointment to the Public Utilities Board of following individuals, Larry Boggs and Jeff Parkinson.
Motion.
Uh, expire June thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty-eight. Motion by Brackett, second.
Wilson, second.
Second by Wilson.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, do, do we need to change that to twenty twenty-five in our, in our packet? I, I don't know if we need to change that or not, just to be, just to be on the safe side.
So which one is it?
Twenty-eight, I'm sure, because, yeah.
It says twenty-eight.
It says twenty-eight.
Huh?
Says twenty-eight.
Okay, mine, mine had twenty-five.
But it says three-year term, twenty, uh, June.
That's good.
All right, any discussion, any debate? All of those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. All right, no zoning, no old business, ten on the new business. Resolution zero-six-two-five-zero-one, a resolution to approve execution of thirty-six month agreement with the host, uh, my calls for landline telephone services and equipment for Rome County.
Getting in motion.
Motion by Gann, a second by?
Henderson.
Henderson, Commissioner Gann.
Nothing, sir.
Commissioner Henderson.
Nothing further.
Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none. Uh, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. All right.
Does that, since it was money, do we need to have...
No, uh, so I actually did some research, or Nancy here helped us. Tennessee Code of Annate eight forty-four, one oh four. Unless we're procuring new funding, new money, we can do it voice vote, we don't have to do it roll call. So when looking at these ten resolutions, uh, we should be, but if I'm wrong, somebody stop me. So we're going back to the original resolution on this next one here, zero-six-two-five-zero-two. Resolution to cancel all contracts with Novatech and or Wells Fargo for copying services using funding, uh, outfalls, uh, for the Source well free. All right, motion by?
Henderson.
Henderson, second by Parks, Commissioner Henderson.
Nothing further.
Commissioner Parks.
Nothing further.
Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, zero-six-two-five-zero-three, a resolution to approve the three-year agreement with Bennett, uh, Direct for online procurement services including, uh, bid posting, uh, vendor registration, bid evaluation, and contract management, uh, modules.
Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Gann, second by?
Brackett.
Second by Brackett, Commissioner Gann.
Nothing, sir.
Commissioner Brackett.
Nothing.
Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Oh-six-two-five-zero-four, resolution to approve a five-year agreement with, uh, Centos Corporation for the provision and services of automated, uh, external defibrillators, uh, units for Rome County facilities. Motion by?
Goss.
Second by Brackett, Commissioner Goss.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd like to chime in on this a little bit. What it is, we've got fourteen AEDs in the county, and I don't know if anyone wants to speak on it either or not, but we've got fourteen AEDs right now. We've got to replace in this county. Some of these AEDs are twelve, thirteen, fourteen-year old. This contract right here, in the end, is actually going to save the county money because we have to pay the expense of replacing the batteries, uh, replacing the pads, uh, which is becoming a high cost. I mean, we just ordered some PDS.
I bet you, what'd you say that was? One thirty?
One thirty apiece, so, uh, we're gonna save money like that. If an AED goes down, Kenny or somebody, whoever that's actually gonna take care of it, they'll call them, and they will overnight us another AED. So, uh, it's a, it's a win-win situation for the county, is all I can say.
All right, Commissioner Brackett.
Nothing.
All right, any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, resolution zero-six-two-five-zero-five, uh, resolution amending funds, one forty-one, one forty-three, four-four, four-six, and one seventy-seven, reflecting changes in revenue and expenditures estimates for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. Motion by?
Motion Henderson.
Henderson, second by Gann, Commissioner Henderson.
Nothing further.
Commissioner Gann.
Nothing, sir.
Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Resolution zero-six-two-five-zero-six, a resolution reflecting changes expenditure to the District Attorney General Fund three-six-four for twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. Motion by?
Hamilton.
Motion by Hamilton, the second.
Parks.
Parks. Commissioner Hamilton.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Parks.
Nothing.
Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Resolution zero-six-two-five-zero-seven, a resolution reflecting changes to expenditure for General Fund one oh one, uh, for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year.
Wilson, motion.
Wilson, motion, second.
Henderson.
Henderson, Commissioner Wilson.
Been through the budgets, clean up on the overages of board of equalization, nothing further.
Commissioner Henderson.
Go on, he said.
All right, any discussion, any debate? All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oh-six-two-five-zero-eight, a resolution reflecting changes in revenue expenditures for the Drug Task Force three-five-seven for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. Motion by?
Hamilton.
Second by Hooks. Dr. Hamilton.
Nothing further.
Commissioner Hooks.
Nothing but.
All right, any discussion, any debate? All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Resolution zero-six-two-five-zero-nine, resolution to adopt, uh, twenty, twenty-five Rome County Hazardous Mitigation Plan.
Gann, motion.
Second by...
Motion by Gann, second by Goss, Commissioner Gann.
Nothing, sir.
Commissioner Goss.
Uh, nothing, sir.
Any discussion, any debate? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Resolution zero-six-two-five-ten, resolution to place in surplus Rome County vehicles and equipment as listed on the attached sheet dated April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, entitled Surplus Vehicles and Equipment. Motion by?
Brackett.
Second by Hooks, Commissioner Brackett.
Nothing.
Commissioner Hooks.
Nothing.
Any discussion, any... Commissioner Berry.
Lynn, did, did public auction, I noticed we were all about, uh, the, the deals. Public auction works okay?
Um, that was a regular, it was probably, we can file, have the community. Um, if you want to, we'll keep it more.
It doesn't matter, I'm just, I'm just curious about public auction, if they...
I haven't heard anything to the nay.
Okay, fine, that's fine, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, any other discussion, any other debate? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, should I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, sir.
All right, motion by Gann, second by Parks, all in favor say aye?